I heard that.
Did somebody forget to call in? Push the text.
Yes.
Somebody, did anybody talk to him? Somebody should have talked to him.
I want to call to order the Tuesday, February 19th, 2019, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask you to please bow your head in a moment of silent prayer and reflection. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, unbelied, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jones, would you please run through the adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Chairman Mallory. We have one addition under new business, which is a resolution that will be presented by Commissioner McNeely, and then we have five announcements that will be under vacancies occurring on the boards and commissions.
And I believe we'll add to that new business also a reading of the resolution that we passed at our retreat. Any further adjustments? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hap. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. There are no special awards this evening. We're very pleased and honored to have, as an appointment before the board, the Mayor of the City of Statesville, the Honorable Coste Couteille. He is accompanied by John Ferguson, who is the airport manager, and his honor is going to...
Well, I just came on up. I don't know if I was supposed to do that or not, but...
Is going to bring us up to speed on recent events and future actions and opportunities at the Statesville Regional Airport, of which the county partners with the City of Statesville on many aspects of development.
Thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes tonight. I did want to come and report to you about the recent purchase by the City of Statesville of the assets of the fixed base operator. But before I do that, I want to thank you again, and thank you publicly for your support together with us on just about everything that we do out there. It's because of that partnership that our regional airport is second to none, in my opinion, and it continues to grow and flourish and prosper, and will continue to do so into the foreseeable future. The way this really started was sort of a chance conversation with some of us from the city and the FBO, that we have conversations with them all the time, and I think they first mentioned if the city would have any interest in acquiring the assets of the FBO. As you know, Statesville Flying Service has been the FBO at the Statesville Regional Airport for a long, long time. Phil Hazel and now Thomas have provided tremendous service to all the citizens of Iredell County, and particularly to the citizens of Statesville and their operation and management of that. But once they made that suggestion, we thought, well, maybe we should pursue that, and we did. And to that end, we had a market study done, and that we completed in 2017, and it gave as an important option that a city-owned FBO was not a bad idea. So to that end, we hired a man named Frank Newton, who is an attorney and an airport consultant. Interesting history, which I won't go into, but he had worked at Charlotte and worked at airports in Florida, went to law school while his wife was in a job in Florida, and we hired him to consult with us, and he concluded, after looking at all of our leases, which are numerous and varied and have evolved over time, that it would be good to pursue that. And so we began the pursuit with the FBO for the purchase of the assets. We came to an agreement probably late in the fall. We did our due diligence, and we were pleasantly surprised at how well-maintained the assets of the FBO were, particularly the fuel tank that they use and their facilities that they own were very well-maintained and would require minimal remedial repairs immediately. So with that, we authorized the manager and Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Newton to negotiate with the FBO, and we reached an agreement on a price. And while the purchase price was $5.4 million, which seems like a lot of money, the majority of that was for the two hangars that have been recently built by the FBO, the big hangar up close to the terminal and what we call the Rubbermaid Hangar. So basically, those two probably have that much value in themselves, so all the other assets that we received were kind of for free. The other thing that is interesting and exciting to me is that one of the reasons for the delay in closing, we closed on January 31st, was that the Hazels were negotiating with a prospective purchaser for the Rubbermaid Hangar. And so we all thought that might be a good idea if somebody else wanted to buy it, and then they'd have the ground lease with the city, but that would be one less asset that we would have to purchase. But after a lot of wrangling there, that did not work out. But all of Mr. Newton's pro formas on the airport had the Rubbermaid Hangar vacant for a period of time into the future. So he indicated that he thought we could run the airport at a profit, so to speak, with no revenue from the Rubbermaid Hangar. Subsequent to that time, and to show what good people the FBO operators are and were, they continued to negotiate with folks to use the Rubbermaid Hangar and have landed an $8 million Gulfstream, which we have in there right now. So that doesn't fill the hangar, and we're actually thinking about, and that's just on a short-term lease basis, but $8 million in tax bases, $8 million in tax base for the time being, and when your pro forma was figured with zero in there, we're excited about that. Mr. Ferguson has also promised us, I forgot what the, he made an absolute unequivocal promise about something, was it fuel sales?
He said, "I bet my job on this whole..."
Oh, yeah, well, he bet his job on this deal working, and he said absolutely. So if it doesn't work, we won't have an airport manager either. But it's going to work, and he promised us that fuel sales would increase, and so he presented me tonight with the numbers just for February, which is our first month of operation, and not because of his genius or anything that we've done exciting, except just to make our place available and fuel available. We are already within about 4,000 gallons of what we pumped for the entire month of February last year with, what, 11 days? Well, we don't have it, 28 days, so with nine days left in the month. So we're excited about that. We are, I want to say to you that we have a lot of projects underway, which you're aware of, the South Parallel Taxway, the eastern part of it is being completed. You probably have read or seen that we are in the improvement plan for the year 2025. We broke down the $38 million project, which was for the expansion of the runway to the west, and we broke that into five phases, and basically phases one and two are in there, and that will be our land acquisition. The total of that is about $16 million, and I believe that, did that require any match at all? That was no match, so that's wonderful news. It's just that the timeline is a little bit slower than we would like, but it's faster than it was going to be if we had kept it as one project. And then the other thing that we're really excited about is we will be on the agenda of the NC DOT in March for a project that we think is going to be viewed very favorably, and it will be a more immediate project, and it will allow us to expand even further the availability of hangar space at the airport. And it actually, we have some friends at NC DOT Aviation who have really continued to respect and be excited about the work that we're doing at Statesville Regional Airport, and for that reason, we think have kind of gone to bat for us in front of the DOT. So we're very optimistic that by the middle of next month, we'll have some really good news for the citizens of Iredell County. John has moved his office out to the regional airport. That's been good for the soft drink supply at City Hall, because he's not there to raid that cooler every day, but we're excited about that. We have retained all the employees that were there, so we have made them city employees. I think they're excited about that opportunity to receive city benefits, and I'm not sure that they had any 401K or retirement plan opportunities out there. And we have some short-term plans to modernize the terminal. I don't think I would say that we want to replace the terminal building, but we want to modernize it and perhaps reconfigure it a little bit there. And I'm committed, I'm committed as the owner of the airport now to come and bring you more frequent reports, and hopefully the news will be good. And again, as I said, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and we appreciate your participation and partnership with us at the airport. Thank you very much. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but...
Any questions for Mayor Couteille?
Mr. Trebin, I'd just like to say, I serve on our board as our representative on the Airport Commission, and I also want to let everyone know that on behalf of our citizens, we invest along with the city to the airport, and I also want to thank NC DOT. They have been tremendous to us on the Airport Commission, and the city and the county with DOT grants that has helped us grow. And just for the record and the media and the public, the airport has a great economic asset, not only to Iredell County, but like the mayor said, to the region. And just wanted to remind everybody how important it was, and it is a great asset, and thank John for the work he's done. We serve with him on the Airport Commission.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, I think a couple meetings ago, we had an opportunity to review some economic data that included comparisons of all the different airports in North Carolina, and the economic benefit that is brought to Iredell County by the Statesville Regional Airport is very significant and is a, really, one of those drivers for our economic development throughout the county. Charlotte is becoming less and less hospitable to general aviation and posturing the Statesville Regional Airport to be able to absorb that dysphora, if you will, of general aviation that is moving out. And one of the great advantages the Statesville Regional Airport has over, let's say, our neighbors in Cabarrus and Concord Airport is that it is not under the purview of the Charlotte Air Control. So while in some surrounding airfields, people may be sitting on the runway for a good, long while, waiting for clearance from Charlotte, we're controlled out of Atlanta and have the ability to just roll out on the end of the runway and go. And that's a significant selling factor for companies and individuals who have invested a lot of money and don't want to be burning gas just sitting on the end of the runway.
I think Chairman Mallory, another thing that's of interest is, and Rubbermaid's a great example, they had been housed in Baltimore, and then the chairman wanted to move closer to Atlanta, and they couldn't get, Atlanta has three regional airports in the vicinity, and they could not get the first one, they could not get a spot at the first one or the second one. And by the time they went to the third one, which was still a lot closer to Atlanta than it is to, you know, than being in Statesville, they did an analysis, and it was just as easy to be in a place like Statesville as it was to still be there and face that kind of traffic. So first, second of, first of all, you know, we're here to serve our citizens and our corporate clients and all that, but at the time that Rubbermaid was occupying their hangar, they did not have a single employee in Iredell County, except for the folks that work in aviation. So not only do we provide an opportunity for our own current citizens, but we provide an opportunity to generate tax base for the county by having outsiders come here. And I say often, and you alluded to this, Mr. Mallory, that in 1939, when those four guys were just looking for a place to fly their planes, they could not have picked a better location, because it was, as you said, outside of the Charlotte Fly Zone and just a very convenient and accessible place that has served us well for all that period of time and will serve us well into the future. And as I said, the plans that are approved and the plans that are on the drawing board for the regional airport are just staggering. And, you know, just as a final comment, the assets that are out there, I think we would all agree that those assets tax the resources of the county and the city probably way less on average than any other citizen does. So it benefits all of us to have all the tax base we can at the airport. I think it helps to keep our tax rate low in the county and the city, and it's something that we're proud of in the city and I think throughout the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Couteille and Mr. Ferguson. At this time, we have a public hearing to consider a request by Stony Ridge Properties LLC to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville, and Mr. Matthew Todd will tee that up for us.
Good evening to the board. The release we have tonight for zoning and subdivision jurisdiction is on Cornelius Road. You can see it on the screen outlined in blue. It is adjacent to existing city limits with the town of Mooresville. This is just a future land use map showing that the county identified this area for future office and institutional uses. The scenario we have here is you've got an existing business on Exmoor Road. They're actually expanding, they need more parking for employees. They're tripping the town of Mooresville's watershed requirements, and they need to put a detention pond in the back on that adjacent piece. So they're requesting to be put into Mooresville zoning jurisdiction so that can be accommodated. And over, since the property has been posted with the public hearing, we've not heard any concern from the community. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Todd?
We do have a letter in our packet that stated that Mooresville's planning was all right with this and...
Yes, we do.
Very receptive to it.
Yes.
Okay, and you've heard nothing from the contrary from them?
Correct.
Any other questions? At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have one person that signed up, Mr. Ronnie Smith. Mr. Smith, would you like to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
If you could come, I know you're, I'm sorry you have to walk all the way up there, but our audiovisual doesn't pick you up unless you're next to the mic, and if you would please announce your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Ronnie Smith, and I'm here representing Stony Ridge Properties LLC as one of our companies, and we're the present owner of the properties in question and stuff. And I think Mr. Todd here did a very good presentation explaining it and everything. It's primarily, we're going to extend the parking lot to accommodate the tenant. They're going to be adding on another 90 employees, and it's all, that facility will be, it's occupied by Kiro Healthcare. So they're going to be expanding any employees, and because of that, we've got to add on to the parking lot to accommodate what they're going to be doing. So we need a place to put the stormwater, and the most logical place for it to be is down in that lower area that's contingent, contingent to the existing Mooresville jurisdiction.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith? I just want to thank you for being an entrepreneur and doing, providing opportunities for folks to have businesses and those businesses to employ Iredell County citizens. There's no one else that's signed up to be heard. I would inquire of anyone that's in attendance if you would like to be heard on this matter. Hearing and seeing none, I will close this public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the request for a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville by Mr. Ronnie Elsman.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hope you heal up soon. At this time, we'll move on to item eight, administrative matters that, for the most part, were dealt with at the pre-agenda meeting. Let me just say, the pre-agenda meetings that we have at 5:00 are public meetings. They're open to the public, and mostly they deal with technical issues involving staff, and we try to do those early so staff can be able to get home and not just be sitting around waiting for these to be disposed of in the evening. I would say that we are moving to improve our audio and visual facilities here so that we can better serve the public. We get reports that people have difficulty hearing us or seeing us. That may be a blessing, but hearing us at least for the record, we want people to be able to clearly understand us. So beginning next meeting, we will be conducting our pre-agenda here in the Commissioner Meeting Room, and it will be at the same time, at 5:00. It will be, once again, open to the public, and we encourage folks to be here, but it will also be televised. Okay, Ms. Jones, if you could run down the matters that are appropriate for consent agenda motion?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of the Sheriff's Office records and retention and disposition schedule as provided and approved by the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. The next item is a request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 31 in the amount of $592,594 to appropriate jail operation funds to purchase furniture, fixtures, and equipment. These are items for the jail expansion project that is currently underway. The next is a request from the library for approval of Budget Amendment Number 32 to apply for and accept a North Carolina Public Library Directors Association Scholarship from the State Library of North Carolina. The next is a request from the library for approval to apply for discounted internet services under the Federal Communications E-Rate Program for fiscal year 2020, or, excuse me, fiscal year, yes, correct, 2020, and this is a 60% discount on these services, which equates to a savings of $13,200. There's a request from the library for approval to apply for the State Library of North Carolina for the Library Services and Technology Act grant to conduct a needs assessment of the Iredell County Public Library System to develop a long-range strategic plan. Again, this is a grant for $15,817 with a 25% match of county dollars that would be included in the upcoming fiscal year budget, and that amount is $5,273, is the match from county funds. A request from Solid Waste for approval of a three-year pre-event contracts for monitoring and removal of disaster debris during emergency events. A request from the Health Department to give an update on the Community Child Protection Team and request approval to appoint five members to this board. This is something that was approved and was agreed by consensus to add those appointments under the announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. A request from Human Resources to move forward with the application process for substantial equivalency. This is applicable to the Department of Social Services and the Health Department. Request from Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 29 in the amount of $50,000 to accept an appropriate Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Level 2 funding. Request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 30 to recognize the proceeds of a lease purchase. We have to recognize the revenues and expenditures for that lease purchase. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the January refunds and releases, and finally, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on February 5th, 2019.
All right, we've an opportunity to have that summary of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the pre-agenda.
The motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. We'll circle back to item 8.1. This is a request from the Registered Deeds, Mr. Ron Wyatt, for approval of a resolution granting authority to set the office hours for both Statesville and Mooresville offices in the event of inclement weather or safety issues. So, Mr. Wyatt, if we could be...
Good evening.
Good evening.
The request is pretty simple and straightforward. Since my time as being a Registered Deeds for Iredell County, we have tried to run the office as frugally as we could without exhausting taxpayer resources and funds. The first couple years, simple communications on inclement weather situations of when the office should be open or closed occurred regularly, and the reason that's an issue, and by statute, the Registered Deeds Office should be located in the primary courthouse that serves the citizens of the county. There are examples, just like ours, to where we're in an annex building, but most of the day-to-day users of the courthouse are the bar association, the attorneys doing real estate transactions, and other matters like that, even representing families, forgetting vital records and statistics. It just simply makes sense that the Registered Deeds Office and the Clerk of Court, which is the function heartbeat of the courthouse, that the hours would be consistent and that the bar association be able to utilize both offices at the same time. The Registered Deeds Office falls under the county purview, and by the statute set forth in the state of North Carolina, county commissioners set all hours, and those hours should be consistent for the primary Registered Deeds Office throughout the entire year. When we had a situation earlier this year, it became apparent that one day there was communications, the next day it was a different form of communications, and I simply didn't get those. It boils down to, I don't check county email on personal devices for public records disclosure reasons. If people wants to see how we're checking and responding to emails outside of hours in a public records request, whatever devices you're using to do that can, of course, have to be turned over for that purpose. So outside of office hours, I don't normally check emails. One of your commissioners don't do texting, so we kind of got caught in a quandary of how we get the information. Somebody gets texts, somebody gets emails, and trying to do it the same way. To me, it boils down to bluntly, as I said earlier, that office hours for inclement weather was the first concern, and talking with the county manager, by statute and by policy that you all have, county... that you all have, county manager makes the decisions for opening and closings, which, of course, is appropriate. In certain circumstances, the Register of Deeds office needs the latitude to be an open and fair and consistent with clerk of court in the courthouse. County manager explained that that was not in her purview to have hours set differently for one office than the whole county for liability reasons, and that also makes sense. In discussing it further, the statutes are set up primarily for all counties to have, or not primarily, for the purpose of all counties in the state to have one Register of Deeds office. In North Carolina, there's only one other office that has two Register of Deeds locations that are open to the public within a significant amount of time. We are the only county in the state that has two Register of Deeds offices that are open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 normally. Because of the discussion with the county manager and because of those circumstances, it was suggested that I come up with a different solution because there are numerous Register of Deeds throughout the state that either make the decision on inclement weather themselves and/or are involved in the process, meaning the county commissioners have allowed that process to exist. And me submitting a resolution for you all's consideration, miscommunications occurred somehow or another, and it's my understanding, our county attorney spoke with the league of ministers, I'm sorry, the school of government, to ascertain that other Register of Deeds offices, Register of Deeds have that decision. And without the proper communications, a different question was asked versus what I had already spoke to a couple commissioners about. Then that led us into more confusion about what was happening. So, I met with a couple commissioners on the task force that oversees that part, and the county manager, and we came up with what should have been or could be a resolution that works for everybody, and that the state's office should always be following the statutes as to the hours of operation. The Mooresville office this past year was closed five days, or parts of five days. Two of those days simply was because of manpower shortages due to sickness, and one of those was being sworn in to keep our job, a legal responsibility. But based off the conversation I had with the county manager, it was not in my authority to close the office then. To my knowledge, none of you all got a call wanting to know why I closed the office. After all, the people do elect me to run the office and make the decisions for the office. The other three days that that office was closed was simply due to the fact that it was not ADA compliant. People in wheelchairs and walkers couldn't open the door and walk into the office and use it the way that they should be by statute, and we had to close the office three days so that they could take a wall out so that folks using those type of devices could get in there. So the limited times that the office was closed in Mooresville was not because I just simply wanted to close it on a whim, it was because I needed to do it out of necessity. Having said that, if I staff it based off of the way some other departments are within the county to make sure that there's ample staffing, when you have medical leave, when you have FMLA leave, when you have employees that have earned vacation time and you simply run out of a clock as to when they could take it, then just staffing alone would be an additional $180,000 a year. By you all granting me the authority as the people elected me to run that office to make the decision if that office needs to be closed two hours early because of staffing concerns and safety concerns of only having one employee in there, then it saves us that money because we're not having to spend it and have an employee sit there to make sure that we have ample coverage should there be other issues such as FMLA and sickness and things of that nature. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Wyatt, what happens on a day that there's a real estate closing in Mooresville, and that attorney, according to the Good Funds Act, they can't disperse those funds until the deed is recorded? So a lot of times, those attorneys run to the Register of Deeds office maybe 4:30 in the afternoon, make that recording, and then the next day, they will disperse those funds. How will that affect, how will attorneys know that you're going to close on the days that you feel you have to close?
The state's office will not be closed. The Mooresville office is simply there as a convenience. It is, we're not required by statute to have it open. Of the two days that I closed it because of staffing concerns and/or been the swearing-in ceremony last year, it was not at the end of the day, it's the first of the day. We have enough part-time employees to where I can normally coordinate staffing at the end of the day. It's when I find out that people can't come to work because of sickness or other issues first thing in the morning that could cause the issue. But to answer your question, again bluntly, that office is out of convenience, and it is not there so that they can do all their business and is a save-all. The three days that it was closed because it was not an ADA compliance, there was well noticed put up saying that it's going to be closed these days.
Sometimes you got to do what you got to do.
Ultimately, that's it, and that's what I'm requesting of you all, to respect the fact that the citizens elected me to make those decisions on a daily basis without us having to call at least three commissioners and get permission at the last minute.
Any other questions?
Mr. Wyatt, you mentioned here, safety issues.
Yes, sir.
What are you talking about there?
An employee working by themselves, this day and time in buildings, in my opinion, is a safety concern, especially if I have an employee down there that don't have a lot of years of experience in handling multiple customers at one time. Mooresville office is one of those locations that you may work there two people, may work there an hour, as we have discussed before in county budget sessions. Was that office a necessity to be open? Well, to me, it is because of administrative work that they're able to do without having customers walk up and interfere with them doing data entry. However, having said that, there are times in Mooresville to where you have lots of people in the office needing something done at one time. Well, if I only have one person in there, and probation and parole's just right around the corner down there, and they're constantly taking weapons and other things off of these folks coming in for probation and parole violations, I don't feel comfortable leaving an employee in there by themselves to tend to multiple people in the office at one time. That's a safety concern.
Mr. Wyatt, you alluded to earlier that there was obviously maybe two different questions asked.
Yes, sir.
Really kind of, maybe even two different entities to a point. Could you expound on the, what question you asked and of who, and the answers you got as far as hours concerning and other register deeds?
My understanding, when the county manager and I was speaking about the issue, and when I spoke with a couple commissioners about what we needed to happen, was would I inquire with other register deeds and see what their standard practice or their way of doing business was? There's an association called North Carolina Association of Register Deeds, NICARD. Every register deeds in the state with the exception of one county is a member of that organization. Lots of other reasons why, but just safely say it's a daily communication with what's occurring, the way of doing business, interpretations of the law, various statutes. One professor from UNC School of Government, Charles Sipsak, is the one who is basically recognized as the expert not only in North Carolina but throughout the world as it relates to doing business in the register deeds office. My question to the NICARD Association, based off of the second office location, because at that time, I didn't see the need that the both register deeds offices be included in what was being discussed, was, did any of them make any decisions in inclement weather as to being, coming in late or leaving early? At that point, 61 of those 99 responded that they did and/or were equivalent with the county manager in making the decision that was appropriate. The others either didn't respond, or the answer was no. I have no clue what specific question was asked prior to that question from the county attorney, but in an email later, it basically asked if the register deeds in other counties decided office hours in those counties. And of course, the answer there is no. The statute clearly says that the county commissioners do that or give the authority to the county manager or register deeds or another person if they choose. After that question was asked, and you all was presented the information, I think the following day is when Professor Sipsak acknowledged that while he didn't know the answer to the question, or he answered it the way he did the day before, he also had never asked that question of how many register deeds in the state done it. And that email said that I had the opportunity to do that through NICARD, which had already been done.
Any additional questions, comments? Mr. Wyatt, thank you for coming and bringing this issue to our attention. Understand, from your position in the register deeds, you're managing or balancing different equities here between a court system, which is a state entity, and a county citizenry that is a customer of yours for not just court-related matters, but for marriage certificates, death certificates, just getting copies of powers of attorney that have been on record, a number of things that don't have anything to do with court, but just have things to do with servicing people's needs, which your office does very well, particularly in its unique capacity of having two different locations. That does present some complicating kind of factors that probably are not dealt with in other counties relative to expectations that citizens have about certain hours, because they're going to get a document that is going to be needed to accomplish something that's important in their lives. So, that's an equity that as a county board that we have to be attuned to. And then, of course, the clerk of court has other issues that he has to be concerned with, just as you. So I think you hit, the word here is process, which you mentioned, and so I think that what we would, I would feel comfortable with is us to defer action on this request at this time, and to ask our county manager and yourself and Jim Mixon as the clerk of court, the three entities that have the equities involved, to determine a specific process that's acceptable to everyone, and that ultimately is simple for the benefit of the citizens of this county, because whenever we change the hours of operation for county offices or your office or the clerk of court, that's sent out on a simulcast kind of broadcast that rings everybody's telephone. And what we don't want to do is have multiple messages for different operations, unique hours that are going out there that can lead to some confusion on behalf of the general public.
All due respect, that already occurs.
Well, I'm suggesting that the three of you get together and work out a process where there is no confusion and where there is a timely decision and timely communication of this to the citizens of this county, which we all serve. So, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we would defer this particular resolution and ask our Register of Deeds, Mr. Wyatt, our clerk of court, Mr. Mixon, and our county manager, Ms. Jones, to sit down and work up a comprehensive plan to include in this resolution, so this about what's going to happen going forward, and that it be attached to this resolution and that we see this at our next meeting.
A motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Wyatt, if you'll please coordinate with Ms. Jones and Mr. Mixon, and you all work up a process and a way ahead, then we'll be happy to entertain that and act on it at our next meeting. Okay, we now move on to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. This relates back to item 8.8, which is a request from the Health Department to give an update on the Community Child Protection Team and to request approval to appoint five members, two of whom have some special qualifications required, and three of whom are general members of the public. We heard that request at our pre-agenda meeting and were agreeable to move forward and decided that there was no reason to delay announcing those positions. So we have added to the agenda on item nine, announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, those five vacancies for the Health Department's Community Child Protection Team. If anyone in the general public is interested in serving on that board, ask that they visit the county website or call and get a application and fill that out, and please submit it so that we can include it in the decision that we make two weeks from now.
And Chairman Mallory, if I may add, just for the record, one of those five appointments, one needs to be an EMS provider or firefighter, and the other needs to be a parent of a child that has passed away before age 18, and then the other three would be at-large members.
All right. We'll now move on to appointments to boards and commission. As we mentioned two weeks ago, I think everyone probably got their letter from the county with the good news that probably your land, real property, has increased in value and your net worth has increased. But with that good news goes some not-so-good news from most people's perspective, in that they get to share that wealth or that good news with the county, and if they live in the city, with the city and our municipalities in the form of their taxes. So, there is a process by which, if people disagree with the assessed value, that they can appeal that to a board which will review, it's a Board of Equalization and Review that reviews any additional evidence that people have that can bring forward that may impact the actual valuation of that property. I believe they have about a 30-day period to file.
It's 30 days from the date of the notice.
So, that would be March the 2nd or 3rd, somewhere in that range. So, if you're think, if you're not happy with your tax assessment and you want to be heard on it, you have a limited amount of time to avail yourself of appearing before the Board of Equalization and Review. To that end, we have to have a board, and so this evening, we are going to be considering the appointment of six individuals to fulfill that role. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, each year, the Board of Commissioners appoint the Board of Equalization and Review for the calendar year. This year is very important that we have an experienced and knowledgeable board to hear the appeals for the 2019 reappraisal. The current board have all agreed to serve again, and the tax collector, Bill Furtis, is recommending the Board of Commissioners reappoint these board members. The board members can serve for six terms and then are eligible for additional terms after a year off the board. I recommend that we appoint Mike Loftus, chairman, fifth term; Carl Lombardo, vice chairman, sixth term; Mike Brotherton, member, third term; Dan Howard, member, third term; Hal Jolly, member, second term; Al Simmons, alternate, second term.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hough. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously, and we certainly thank these gentlemen and ladies for their willingness to serve. As you can see, they've got deep experience, having been through this whole process, some as many as six times before. So we now move on to, there's no unfinished business we're aware of. This is not a, this is a public comment period. Has anybody signed up? No one signed up, so we'll move on to new business. The first item of new business, I'd like to just simply make everyone aware at our county commission retreat that we held the last weekend on Friday and Saturday at our new public safety building. We entertained a resolution concerning the decision that the Department of Environmental Quality will be rendering as to how Duke Energy should be disposing of or treating the coal ash that is currently stored on-site at the Marshall Steam Station. And if you've been reading the papers, or perhaps were there, you know that they had a public comment period for a number of weeks, had a very well-attended meeting where county representatives, as well as our Health Department and Senator Sawyer and Representative Fraley were there to share with the Department of Environmental Quality the concerns that citizens and we as elected officials and county departments have concerning the method of closing those coal ash storage facilities. So we have passed a resolution, and I'd like to read it so that everyone is aware that this has been entered into the record in the public comment period for Department of Environmental Quality's consideration. And we will be taking this resolution and sending it to surrounding counties and other representatives. Resolution by the Iredal County Board of Commissioners in support of complete excavation of the unlined coal ash basin at Marshall Steam Plant. Whereas, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality held a series of information sessions for the public to learn about options for closing coal ash impoundments. And whereas, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality solicited public comments about the three methods identified by Duke Energy for closure at the Marshall Steam Plant, including closure in place, closure by removal to an on-site landfill, and hybrid closure, a plan including closure in place and closure by removal. And whereas, the public's health and well-being is of critical concern and essential to a healthy, prosperous environment for our citizens. And whereas pursuant to a court order and settlement agreement when thirty-nine thousand tons of coal ash were released into the Dan River, Duke Energy was required to excavate all of the coal ash from eight of its coal ash sites across North Carolina. And whereas, the Marshall Steam Plant on Lake Norman in Cataba County is one of six sites where Duke Energy is proposing to leave its coal ash alongside a river or lake. And whereas, there are seventeen million tons of coal ash in the unlined basin at Marshall Steam Plant, where Duke Energy is balancing the risk of keeping coal ash on-site with the cost of excavation. And whereas, the North Carolina Department of Environmental and Natural Resources, Division of Energy, Mineral, and Land Resources, Land Quality Section raided the Marshall Steam Plant's Ash Basin Dam as high hazard potential in a notice of inspection with recommendations for maintenance improvements issued March eleventh, two thousand fourteen to Duke Energy. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia is requiring Dominion Energy to excavate all coal ash from its unlined waterfront lagoons, and the state of South Carolina requires the excavation of all unlined utility-owned riverfront coal ash lagoons, including Duke Energy lagoons. Therefore, be it resolved that the Iredal County Board of Commissioners does hereby request Governor Cooper and the General Assembly to take action to require Duke Energy to excavate the coal ash from the unlined basin at Marshall Steam Plant for off-site removal by railcar to a lined hazardous waste facility, waste landfill away from the Cataba River and Lake Norman. That motion was, or that resolution was passed this past Saturday, or Friday, rather, and was sent in time to be received for public comment. At this time, we have another resolution that we are going to be considering very shortly, and I turn it over to Commissioner McNeely, who has spent considerable time researching and drafting and coordinating this resolution on our behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel like ever since I've been elected county commissioner, I've tried to think of ways to help agriculture in this county, because to me, it's near and dear, and it's our number-one industry. And sometimes your number-one industry don't always do so well, and it's struggling right now, and it could use every little bit of help it can get. And I had a chance to question Bill Furchess, our tax administrator, and left him with the question that he got back to us with, an answer. And my question was, how much does Iredal County actually collect in tax, property tax, on assessed farm machinery? And he sent me back the information, and counting the excess tax plus the fire tax that's also charged on it, it was not quite two hundred thousand dollars. And to some, that's not a whole lot of money. But to others, who are looking for every penny they can to pay their bills, it's a pretty steep investment. It's a pretty large bill. And after sitting down and contemplating it, me and Commissioner Hopp, who are both on the general government task force, which I felt like it fell under, we talked, brainstormed, and have brought back, talked with the board some about it, and have come up with a resolution that I hope will be approved. One thing I'll let you know, what I'm getting ready to read, we're not the only exemption. There's a list that we have out, and exemptions include everything from religion, which I think bears owed to science, scientific, literary, and culture. Also, in the exclusions, it lists a lot of things down here, pollution abatement, recycling. It also lists burial property, which I'm glad we don't charge tax on that, because I said earlier, I'd hate to see where my wife would put me if she had to pay for me from now on. So with that being said, I'd like to read the resolution that I have. The resolution by the Iredal County Board of Commissioners in support of our local farmers and our agricultural industry. Whereas, the leading industry in Iredal County is agriculture, which makes significant contributions to the citizens of not only our county, but also the state of North Carolina and our nation, and I'll also say world, but that's not there. Whereas, the farmers in this county and state continuously face economic uncertainty and financial constraints that threaten their livelihood and the continued viability of the family farm, which in turn impacts our citizens and the existence of agriculture in our county. And whereas, the Iredal County Board of Commissioners desires to support its local farmers to the fullest extent that they are empowered to do so, and asks the North Carolina Legislature to continue and to expand its support of farmers across the state. And whereas, the board is aware of a study commissioned by and through the North Carolina Farm Act of twenty seventeen, also known as Senate Bill 615 of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen session, wherein the Agriculture and Forestry Awareness Study Commission was directed to study a property tax abatement by the state of North Carolina to aging farm equipment, the classification of said equipment under the North Carolina Constitution, and the impact of local governments if aging farm equipment was excluded from property tax, and such study has now commenced. Therefore, be it resolved that the Iredal County Board of Commissioners has evaluated the local impact of the proposed personal property tax abatement for farm equipment and does hereby support the exclusion of farm equipment regardless of age from the tax scrolls of Iredal County for qualifying farmers. Furthermore, the board seeks local legislation be passed by the General Assembly authorizing the same in Iredal County effective January one, two thousand and twenty.
Is there any other comment?
The only comment I'd like to add to this is, if there was just one gallon of cow poop in that coal ash pit, just think how well it would be taken care of. There'd be somebody monitoring it twenty-four-seven.
Mr. Chairman, we don't get a whole lot of opportunities to support our number-one industry in Iredal County. I think this is an excellent move forward in our county.
Also, I want to just reiterate that this has to begin by February twenty-seventh, and we do have buy-in from all of our legislators.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple others I'd like to make them aware of, since some of them are here. In twenty eighteen, guys, our board always sets legislative goals to go to our North Carolina Legislative Goal Committees. And then, one of our main goals for twenty eighteen was to add disclosures to real estate purchases. Farmers in North Carolina must be protected from nuisance lawsuits. Buyers should be required to sign a disclosure during the period of due diligence acknowledging the effects of potential farms. Currently, farms are exempt from zoning in Iredal County. This disclosure would make buyers aware of potential sound, smells, and sights. That was one of our major goals. Also, in October of eighteen, we passed a resolution, and I'd like to read it to you. It was a resolution of the Iredal County Board of Commissioners in support of our local dairy farmers and the industry statewide. Whereas, Iredal County is the heart of North Carolina dairy industry and takes great pride in producing fresh, wholesome milk for the citizens of the state of North Carolina and the United States of America. And whereas, the dairy farmers in this state and the country are experiencing severely depressed prices for their milk and face economic uncertainty as a result. And such economic uncertainty threatens the livelihood of our local farmers, their families, our citizens as consumers, and the existence of agriculture in our county. And Iredal County and the state depend on our dairy farmers and our local agriculture community as a whole for food, as well as local jobs, revenue. Yet they are continuously faced with economic uncertainty and risk encroaching growth and increasing threat of legal action against them by neighbors. And Iredal County Board of Commissioner desires to support its local farmers to the full extent they are empowered to do so, and asks North Carolina Legislature to continue and extend its support of dairy farmers across the state. There it be resolved that the Iredal County Board of Commissioners does hereby request that the state of North Carolina research, evaluate, implement means to alleviate the uncertainty and manage the retail pricing of milk in the state, including but not limited to the reinstatement of North Carolina Milk Commission and allowing the North Carolina Department of Agriculture Consumer Services to become the area marketing administrator for the agricultural marketing service of the United States of Agriculture and Federal Milk Marketing Order Program. Doing so is vital to the supply of fresh milk to North Carolina citizens and now in the future. So I just want you guys to be aware that we know you're out there, we value your economic impact, and we value you as friends and neighbors. So we're trying to help you where we can.
I hope that other counties will take notice, and maybe that we can start a movement across the whole state that someday, North Carolina, which is number-one industry is agriculture, doesn't levy tax, property tax, on farm machinery in the whole state.
At this time, Ms. Jones, would you please render the county manager's report?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. Tomorrow is made aware, actually today, that tomorrow the state will be here to make an announcement for Project Blue Ribbon. They will make that announcement at three o'clock at Mooresville Town Hall in the board chambers, and the board is certainly invited to attend for that announcement. Virginia Tech and UNC Chapel Hill are offering free water, well-water testing, and this is available to any resident or business using private wells in Iredal County. The samples will be analyzed for metals such as lead, copper, arsenic, and chromium. The water quality results will help develop a better understanding of the well-water quality in our area. And free samples and free sample bottles will be available for pickup beginning tomorrow at our Health Department, both at Statesville and at Mooresville, from eight until five. So we do have a press release that is available, it's on our website, and like I said, this is a free service, and it is focused primarily on those well-water individuals to test that well-water. The final report to the board is just to thank the board for their time this past weekend, all day on Friday and half a day on Saturday for our winter retreat. Also, to thank our staff for all of their time that they put in preparing for and participating in the winter retreat. We were able to have that at our public safety complex and showcase our newest building. And I just sincerely wanted to thank the board for their leadership and their guidance. That helps us in developing our budget going forward, and getting good guidance and advice from the board helps us accomplish our missions and goals. And I just wanted to say thank you publicly for all of your input and all of your support and giving us good direction as we move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to say on behalf of our board and general government task force, thank the staff for what they did, and I want to make a public comment, that our retreat is for us to have general discussions. There's no decisions made. I know there's some concern on tax increases for fire and things like that. These are preliminary discussions, there's been no action taken, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for the public, fire department, citizens to interact with us and our staff at future retreats and public events. So I just want to let you all know, there's been no decisions, it's preliminary discussions.
You know, I would just say that staff did a bang-up job in terms of preparing a good roadmap for us going forward in terms of being able to focus in on the issues that are going to determine what our budget's going to look like for the next four years, because we're in a quadrennial budget cycle with revaluation every four years. That sets the table, and we've got to be able to have enough funds to run the last two years, which typically runs out if we don't, you know, maintain a sharp eye on the bottom line. So thank you, Ms. Jones, for the hard work that you and the staff put in on that. I would say, you know, when we have a retreat like that, you hear a lot of times folks go out of town to have those retreats so that they can, you know, have discussions or conversations about issues very freely, because most time, people don't follow them out of town and know what they're talking about. You know, we believe that it's important that we use the facilities that we have here in this county and that we have the opportunity for the press and for people to come in and hear whatever we're saying. But understand, like any kind of conversations you may have around the dinner table about some family decision you're making, there's lots of ideas get thrown around. So understand that if you hear something, validate it. Like Ronald Reagan used to say, trust but verify. Because sometimes, by the time it gets passed along to the second or third or fourth person, whatever it is you heard is not what we talked about, and it certainly wasn't a decision, as Commissioner Hopp said. So we will be engaged in deliberations for the, hot and heavy, for the next four months to develop a budget that's going to carry us forward. We're using some analytic tools this time that have never been available to the county before in terms of being able to manipulate various factors and assumptions so that we can see if growth is a certain amount, or expenditures are a certain amount, or capital is required here, you know, how does that, what's the impact on our budget going forward over the next four years? So we really appreciate the staff and Amy Vinton are coming up and sharing this, developing this tool for our use, and we'll be using that going forward. Okay, is there anything else to come before the?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to thank the farmers and Nancy for coming and support of them tonight, and I'd like to ask, we take a picture with them with the resolution to show our support publicly for what they do and their impact to our county before we adjourn tonight.
Well, I think we ought to send that picture along with the resolution.
Yes.
To Raleigh. Y'all come on up.
Yeah, come on up here, right in front of us, this way. I bet y'all come.
How are you?
Good.
How you doing, sir?
I saw your.
How you doing?
How you doing?
I can do more.
I keep trying.
Everybody, crowd over there in the middle.
Down in the middle.
Come on in. Act like you like each other.
Yeah.
Can we slide over some this way?
Slide back over this way, guys.
Go a little bit more.
You know, you kind of turn angle when you get more in there. There we go. Makes you look thinner. Makes you look thinner. I appreciate Farm Bureau helping put the word out.
Thank you all for coming.
Now I start talking about something else.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all, appreciate you coming, thank you.
It's snowing up your way already, nice.
North, it's snowing.
How about that?
Thank y'all.
You work with her.
Nancy, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Be careful going home.
All right. Are all hearts free?
They are.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.